And welcome to East Hampton School Committee Meeting. Tonight's meeting is, as usual, being filmed by the Public Access Cable Television. And I'd like to thank Tim and all of the employers, employees at Channel 5 for helping us out on these recordings. Because I know many of you at home do not want to miss out on another exciting -- ready? City Council -- what are we?
Who's laughing?
School Committee Meeting.
Who's giggling in the background?
Nancy, do you dare follow that with the announcements?
I think I can do this.
Okay.
The next school committee meetings are October 22nd, November 12th, and December 10th. There is a half day of school on Wednesday, October 2nd, due to teacher professional development. There is no school on Monday, October 14th, due to Columbus Day. There's a half day of school on Thursday, October 24th, and Friday, October 25th, due to parent-teacher conferences. The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee will meet from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the second floor conference room here at 50 Payson Avenue on the following dates: September 11th, October 9th, November 13th, December 11th, January 8th, February 12th, March 12th, April 9th, May 14th, and June 11th.
That was a quick year.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you, Nancy. Do we have any correspondence?
We do. We actually have a very nice letter from the Lee Middle and High School Dean of Students, Athletic Director, and I'd like to read what he wrote about our boys' varsity soccer team. He said, "Hello, Mr. Seelander and Dr. Perona. Just wanted to let you know what a pleasure it was to officiate your varsity boys' soccer team earlier this week. Your student athletes could not have been more appropriate and hard-working. This clearly was a direct result of your coach. Although in the first half they were overmatched, they continued to play hard, work together, and concentrate on soccer. In the second half, they appeared to be the better team. It was very clear that they respected their coach, the other team, and the officials throughout the afternoon. I wish I could say this after every game I officiate, but your team was a class act."
Excellent.
Very nice.
That's very nice. Thank you. Do we have any gifts this evening?
No, we don't.
No gifts? At this time in our meeting, we have what is known as public speak. So anyone that is here tonight and would like to come to the podium and speak on a topic of their choice that is not covered in our agenda, feel free to do so at this time.
I had one question in relation to gifts. If there is -- is there anyone else?
I don't think so, Peter. Go ahead.
I just -- I remember, and I'm trying to find which date. It may have been as far back as June, Nancy. I know that we received, or the school system received, gifts from people in town for periodicals for the school library, which, if I'm remembering that correctly, right?
I do.
And I wondered it -- I thought that we were going to try to work up a list. I think when we sometimes ask folks to support the school system, it's hard -- yes, it was in the June 18th meetings. And it just seemed to me that it's a small but significant way that people in the community can contribute to the learning of students by, you know, I imagine that a magazine subscription might be more affordable for some folks than a larger cash gift, but it would make a real impact in having things available in the library. And I'm sure that there are other things of that type that, you know, when we're operating on a tight budget, we see them as extras that would be great, but we choose not to spend the money on them because of the tight budget. But if someone wanted to help out, that would be a way of making a real impact. So I guess I would just ask if other members of the school committee think it's a wise idea that we consider creating a, you know, sort of a wish list or a, you know, a donations list that would really help support the educational mission of all the schools. I know, I think that one was just the high school library. So I would just ask that we take that under consideration at some point of sort of formalizing, and then perhaps the parent organizations that already work so hard to raise funds might find that useful for guidance as well.
Okay.
That might tie in --
Thank you.
-- with the survey.
Go ahead.
Yes. It might tie in nicely with the Whitebrook Middle School fundraiser magazine drive
Right.
that comes up soon, very soon, that maybe if people didn't want the magazines themselves, they might be interested or willing to order a subscription for the school district.
Excellent idea.
So I can speak with the building administrators and the school district librarian and see what we could get ready, and we can put it on our website and send information home to our students. And we're talking specifically about periodicals and books, that kind of thing for the library.
Yeah. I mean, that certainly was what initiated the idea. I just think, you know, somebody thinks, oh gee, I, you know, what difference is $25 or $50 going to make when you turn and say, oh, well, now this magazine is going to be on the shelf in the library every week? I think in a way, I don't know. Anyway, maybe Jordan would speak from the student perspective that seeing something in the library that you knew was a gift from somebody in the community, maybe that would be better.
Yeah, if you actually see something there and like you see what, like, we're getting from it, people are a lot more like enough to actually taking advantage of like the gifts that we are receiving because it's just there for us to actually use instead of waiting around to use it, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much, all of you. Do we have our subcommittee reports? Do we have a finance subcommittee?
We do not have a report. We haven't met.
Okay. And our policy review?
We have a meeting Thursday the 26th to discuss revisions to the bullying prevention and intervention plan per legal advisory that superintendent follows to be received from the MASs lawyer attorney.
Okay.
Can we move that meeting to 5:15, right? Is it after tomorrow, 5:15?
Yes, we did.
Great. Super. Thank you.
And, Jordan, an update from the real world?
Well, recently, we had the grand opening at the school this past weekend, which went beautifully. The newly-elected class presidents were there for the ribbon-cutting ceremony. Anthony Redfern is the president for the freshman class. Courtney Urban is for the sophomore class. For juniors, we had Brian Delaney, and for the senior class, Tyler Lucia was there. Also, the executive board of student council and some other students were there to help give tours after the ceremony was completed, and everything went over pretty well, and it was a good time for everyone who was involved.
All right. Thank you.
Nice story in the paper about it.
Yes, it was. It was a very good picture, too.
Nice photo of the class presidents.
Yeah, excellent.
Very nice.
Excellent. Are there any other reports from anyone? Well, then, I think we will turn to Superintendent Paulensby's report, and I know that she is going to start off with her goals for this coming year. I know that we, as a school committee, have met in work session for several meetings with Superintendent Paulensby to go over these goals, and so I think tonight you're ready to present the final revised version, correct?
I am. I'm going to present my final goals as discussed and reviewed at our last work session, and the changes that were discussed at that last work session have been included in these goals that you'll see here. As part of the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System, superintendents are required to submit goals to the school committee: a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and three district improvement goals. And this is very closely aligned then with my administrator's goals because they also have to submit to me a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and three school improvement goals, or program improvement goals if it's a director of curriculum or director of special education. And then in turn, the teachers' goals are aligned with principals' goals. They also have to do a student learning goal and a professional practice goal, and they are observed and evaluated based on areas of focus for the teacher rubric determined by the district and building administrators. So everything is very tightly aligned, and these in turn are aligned to our strategic plan, which we're in the third year of a three-year plan. So my first goal that you'll see on the screen is a student learning goal, and it has to do with achievement gap. Ms. Gilfeather, our director of curriculum, will be talking more about that when we do the MCAS presentation. But this goal is about all district educators focusing on two things: using data to determine targeted interventions for our students, and two, improving the instructional core in order to narrow or close all achievement gaps. And the instructional core is content and teachers and students all interconnected to develop a strong instructional program in our schools and strong engagement of students in learning. Now, each goal has key actions, and you can see there are four key actions there with timelines for accomplishing those actions. And then if we scroll down a little further, there are benchmarks for each of those goals. So as presented to the school committee, we talked about what key actions I would do, what the timeline would be, and what kind of evidence I could collect and they could collect to determine success and progress on my goals. There's a mid-cycle review with the school committee on these goals and some tweaking of them if need be. The second goal is a professional practice goal, and mine is school visits. Probably the best way that I can find out what's going on in the schools and help to support administrators and teachers with their key actions and their goals is to do these school visits. So my professional practice goal is during the 2013-2014 school year, I will meet with each building principal and assistant principal at least monthly for the purpose of observing classrooms and providing feedback to administrators and teachers on effective instructional practices. We did this last year. We are trying to intensify it to a greater degree this year so that administrators and the superintendent are, and the program directors are in classrooms as much as possible. My first district improvement goal, and each goal, as you can see, has key actions and benchmarks. And now we get to the first district improvement goal, which is data analysis. For, unless we know what's going on in the district, it's difficult to put into place interventions and support systems to address the needs that we've identified. So my goal is to use data district-wide to make informed decisions about targeted interventions to improve student learning. And again, a number of key actions and timelines for implementing that goal, and the benchmarks for success with meeting that goal. Second district improvement goal is comprehensive assessment strategy, and this is by September 9th, all administrators will be pursuing a challenging yet realistic goal to develop a comprehensive assessment strategy that includes formative and summative assessment. And formative assessment is the kind of assessment that happens along the way to guide instruction, and summative assessment is a, an example would be an end-of-unit test. And meets the requirements of district-determined measures, which is a requirement this year of the educator evaluation system. We have to put into place a pilot of five district-determined measures by February. And then, as the timeline stands now, by the end of the school year, we have to send information to the state, letting them know what district-determined measures -- there need to be two for every content area and every classroom -- what measures we'll be using in our district in 2014, 2015. So this is a rather intimidating task in some ways. We've started work on it already. A lot of the work will happen in curriculum team meetings with teachers working together to determine what they believe would be the best district-determined measures. And so, as it says, these measures are designed to improve student learning and as put forth in the DESI Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Educator Evaluation System. And then we get to district improvement goal three. And that is community engagement, always an important goal. By June 2013, should be 2014, stronger relationships with parents, community organizations, community members, and businesses will be forged in order to promote all that is positive about the East Hampton Public Schools. And some of the key actions are ones that are carried over from last year. Thank you, Ms. Gilfeather. She's going to correct this for me right now.
She was.
She's hoping.
Yeah. You've got to switch it from read or --
There we go.
Right?
Yeah, she did it. We're good. So, number one, I'll just, I just want to point this one out: by the end of October, promotion plans are developed by outreach advisory committee members, and implementation has begun. We formed an outreach advisory committee last year. We have now approximately, I think it's close to 30 people who have joined the group from time to time. Not everybody is there every time, but we have an increasingly, increasing attendance at this committee and more involvement among parents. So that's pretty exciting. We had a meeting in September last week, and we have our tasks to do for October. We'll have another meeting at the end of October. We have not set that date yet, but I'll be sending out a meeting wizard to determine what date that will be, and we certainly welcome anyone in the community who'd like to join our committee or join one of our groups. And information about this will be on the website as well. And so that's one of the big initiatives of this community outreach goal. And again, there are other action plans, one of them having to do with a presence, a social media presence, which we are going, I've already worked with someone, contracted with somebody to help us get more of a social media presence in, for our school department, and we're excited about that. And again, some benchmarks to determine progress on those goals.
Okay. Thank you. The chair entertains now a motion to formally accept the goals that we have worked with Nancy to present tonight. Do I hear a motion?
Hello.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the goals as Nancy has presented them, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? There are your goals.
Okay. That's good. We've been working on them, so.
And one question, will you now be able to produce a final revised version of the strategic plan incorporating those, or is the most recent one that we have? I have one from August. There may be one that's more recently dated than that.
Does that one have the, what's completed and --
Right.
Yes. That's actually the most recent one, based on all of the work we did last year.
Okay, great.
And then at the end of this year, we'll update it again.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next.
So, next on the agenda, as you all know, the MCAS results are public now, and so I've asked Shirley Gilfeather, our director of curriculum, to join me in giving you an update on the MCAS results for the East Hampton Public Schools, and a little summary again of how this very complex formula works for determining the accountability for each district, the level of each school, and what all goes into that. So Shirley did a very good job of that last year, and I'm confident she will do that for us again this year.
Ye of such faith. Okey-dokey. Well, welcome again to MCAS Alphabet City, as we know it in education. The first part of this PowerPoint is going to take you through a lot of the information on some of the components that make up the MCAS reports now. We went through this last year. I tweaked it a little bit, but some of it's going to look pretty familiar to some of you that went through it last year. And then we'll start to talk a little bit more specifically about us. So, first of all, the district big picture, Progress and Performance Index, the PPI. This is the first of our acronyms. These are points that are awarded to a group for making improvement relative to the group's own annual target. Now, I gave you some handouts, so you have handouts in front of you. We're going to take a look at handout number one, which is easily identified by the fact that it has no number on it, and the other one says two.
Perfect.
Okay? So if we take a look at the handout, it's a two-sided handout, and I want you to look at the side that says, what, the side that has the chart that says English, Math, Science, High School. Can you see that side?
Yeah.
Okay? Because that's the side that we're going to talk about first because it has to do with PPI, which is the Progress and Performance Index. And so points are awarded to a group, and so the group that we're talking about here is really like the group English Language Arts. So if we take a look at that, I'll kind of walk you right through it so you can see how this is done.
And this is for our high school, correct?
This is for the high school. I use the high school as an exemplar to walk you through. So for English Language Arts, that's the group, and it's making improvement relative to the group's own annual target. So there's some targets that have been set for the group, and it also has to do with narrowing proficiency gaps, growth, extra credits. You get bonus points for those things, and you can see that each bonus point is added into a score. You'd see that we start with 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013. And you can see down at the bottom, we have total points that are awarded, and then it gets into extra credits, or, excuse me, the number of proficiency gaps. Do a little division there, and you come out with the annual progress and performance indicator. So let's look at the second part of this. It says, "If you make progress," okay, you'll be assigned some points. If you don't make progress, you'll either get a zero for declining, 25 for no change, 50 if you improve but you're still below the target that they set for you, 75 points if you're on target, and 100 if you're above target. Those are the only choices. It's not like you can get a 26 or a 43, okay? Those are the only choices available. So as you look at this chart, and you look at 2013, and we look at English Language Arts, in the area of narrowing the proficiency gaps, okay, which, again, within the Composite Performance Index, better known as CPI, we got 100 points in that area this year. That 100 points means we were above the target that had been set for narrowing the proficiency gaps. If you look down to mathematics, I'll point out a zero, which is where we decline, because we have to show the whole picture. And in math, for extra credit for decreasing, the warning and failure, you have to decrease it by 10% or more. We weren't able to decrease it by 10% or more. In fact, we declined in that category, so we got zero points. Okay? And then you can see the same for the 25s. For example, we got a 25 in, let's pick a 25 in a different area here, 25 in science. We got a 25 points in science for extra credit for increasing the percentage of students that went into advanced. So we move students from the band, known as proficient in most cases, up to advanced. You get 25 bonus points for doing that, okay?
Why does it say no change there and yet improved here?
No change where?
Uh, the --
25.
It just means we kept it the same, correct?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's right. Correct. It was no change. There was no change in the target.
But it, but it, but, okay. Oh, I've got you.
I'm sorry.
But it does say that we've increased the percentage, but we didn't increase it beyond the target.
That's correct. Beyond the target. There was no change. I apologize.
Okay.
No change, so it's 25 points for no change.
Okay.
If we had improved it beyond the target, or if we'd improved it but not reached the target, we would have gotten 50, okay? But we had no change, and so we got 25. Didn't go down, didn't go up.
Shirley.
Yes.
Who determines the target?
The target is an arithmetic process that they go through over the four years, okay? We're going to talk about it a little bit, and you'll see sort of how they get at the target, but it's a, in fact, I said to Nancy the other day, I had a piece of paper and had all this math scribbled all over, and I said, "I had to go through it again just to make sure I understood how they get at the targets for each year." And basically, they're saying, and some of you remember the No Child Left Behind, and you had to make annual yearly progress. Well, this has been replaced now with this idea of needing to reach targets, and the idea is by 2017?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? By 2017, we have to have closed the gap, okay? We have to close the gap by half, by 50%. So what they do basically is they say, here's the gap, okay?
The gap between the highest-performing students or the proficient students?
The gap between where you were in 2010, or, no, 2011, I'm sorry, it was the beginning year, 2011, and reaching proficiency.
That they set for us.
Yes. The goal that they set for us. So there's a goal set for 2017, there's where you were in 2011. That's the difference of six years. So they take that and they say, find the midpoint, okay? So that's what I'm telling you. This is interesting stuff. So you find the 50% point, okay? Then you say, I have to do that, I have to get to that 50% point in six years. So I divide by six. That gives me my new benchmark for each of the six years. So if I was at 20, and if each year I needed to make 20 points, the next year I'd have to be at 40, and then they'll set it again, I have to be at 60, et cetera.
Okay. That's one way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you can just look at the form.
Right.
I'd rather look at the form and trust that somebody figured this out rather than I.
Right.
Okay. So we have PPI calculated basically by whether or not you've made points towards your annual target, okay? We go on and look at indicators. What are the indicators? One of the indicators is narrowing the proficiency gap, narrowing the proficiency gap in math, ELA, and science. So they picked those three areas because they're tested areas in MCAS. Then another indicator for your PPIs, and those are called, those little measurements, those measurements in math, ELA, and science are called CPI, Composite Performance Index. Another measure, and you'll see it right on your paper here, is median student growth percentile, better known as SGP. And you see right on there, there's an SGP for English, and SGP for Math, Science, et cetera.
Okay, I'm, I'm --
I can't find my SGP.
You're still, you're still on the side that says English.
Got it.
And right underneath, English.
Got it.
Okay, I see it. It's the growth one?
Yep. That's the growth one.
SGP.
Student growth percentile. That's good. Keep asking questions. And you'll notice that the student growth percentile is only for Math and ELA, and the student growth percentile is how much a student improves from one year to the next year based on students of similar academic performance.
A cohort of students.
Another calculation. So they do it in math and ELA. Here's your first quiz question.
I'm ready.
Why is it that they don't do it in science?
Not till next year, right?
Because they don't.
What?
Not till next year.
Ladonna got it.
Go ahead. Because?
Because they haven't taken the science at the very beginning. They have to do that next year, Ladonna says.
So they don't do it every year?
Every year.
So you can only get student growth on those things that are tested every year. So they don't do, in the lower grades, they don't do science every year. They do science in fifth grade, they do science in eighth grade, they don't do science in the elementary. So the student growth percentile can only measure something that's done every year. For the students in the middle school, they do an ELA, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. You can get that student growth percentile. Okay. And in the high school, you'll notice down at the bottom, because I gave you the high school as an example, you'll notice that there's an annual dropout rate and a cool, see that? And I don't know why the other part is missing. Ah, maybe, there it is. It just came in. There's two other components for the high school. They're also given points based upon annual dropout rate and cohort graduation rate. So if that again, if that declines, you get a zero.
We didn't get a zero.
Pardon me?
Sorry, I'm just keeping up.
Yeah, that's okay.
Because we didn't get a zero there. We did well.
No, we didn't. We got 75 points.
You met our target.
So it's the same scale that you were used all along, okay? So what does this mean? It means when you're calculating PPI, there are either, one, two, three, four, five, there are either five measures or seven measures. Five measures if you are elementary or middle school, seven measures if you're the high school because you add dropout rate and cohort graduation. So if you look at the total number of points in each column, including the extra credit that they got, they got this year 675 points. They divided by seven. Why seven? Because they're a high school, and they have seven different components that created that total. If we were looking at a middle school or elementary, there would be a total, and it would be divided by?
Five.
Five. Five. Bingo.
Jordan told me.
Okay. Well, notice, I'm not asking you to do any, any of these calculations without calculators. Okay. So those are the indicators for PPI. And PPI is one of the things you hear most, and you'll see in, um, in news articles or whatever, the PPIs get mentioned as a, as a point of comparison.
So is it a really big deal, or is it just numbers, that in the space of four years, we've come, come close, we've more than doubled the, the, the raw total?
Yes.
And, um, more, almost just under-tripled the annual PPI number, from 39...
Right.
39, 61, 79, 96.
That's correct. So what, the question is?
Well, I'm just surprised at why that doesn't produce a whole lot of...
Right.
...good news.
Well...
It does produce good news.
Producing very good news.
Yes.
Okay?
Oh, people just don't know that it's really good news.
Well, we're...
It's difficult. You see the type, probably the article you might be thinking of in the paper doesn't...
We are still a level-three high school.
Bingo. Thank you.
Yes.
But what's happening is that we're making significant progress, and if we continue on this track, you know, our expectation is that our high school will not be a level-three high school next year. Our high school has made some very significant progress.
It all kind of depends on the high school, for that's like the flagship in all of this, correct? It all, it kind of is like tripled?
Well, it just depends on their results. These same numbers that you're seeing here will happen again in 2014. And if we've made all of our indicators, then, you know, we were predicted to not be a level-three high school any longer, to be, um, well, we would hope a level-one high school.
We hope a level-one. You can potentially do it.
Are there figures to tell us how far away, like, points-wise, we get, like, how close? Because we can see the rate very clearly, like Peter was describing. So if that rate were just to maintain at the same, that would put us?
Yes. And, and we're about, we're about to tiptoe into another calculation in just another slide or two, and you can see, and if you want to go home, and, and you have nothing else to do with your life, you can go home and actually try to calculate this out. And actually, I know that the high school has done some calculations in that to try to figure that out. So first, I just want to remind you again that there are extra credits, and the reason that this is important, that this slide is important, you can get up to 150 points in, in extra credit. You can see there's, under, where it says English, Math, Science, and High School, there's that little section that says points awarded for narrowing, and then it says points awarded for extra credit. That's what we're looking at right now, and as, as Peter pointed out, we went from 25, so, so to speak, bonus points in 2010, up to 100 in 2013. And so, we could, you can get up to a maximum of 150, if you get all the bonuses. But you get bonuses, basically, in ELA in math and science, and you get them for either decreasing the number of students in warning and failure by 10% or more, not just decreasing it by one student, but 10% or more, and increasing in the advanced category, getting students usually from proficient to advanced, but sometimes from high needs improvement to advanced. So, um, what's good about that is that there's an incentive for us to be looking at all students, not just concentrating on the ones who are in the failure category, but concentrating on those students that are also in the proficient category, which is good, but to help them get into the advanced category.
Well, and I think it also impacts, um, the way we look at instruction and the rigor of instruction.
That's correct.
So clearly, we're looking at that all the time, because we know that it's directly related to getting more students into that advanced category.
That's right.
So, um...
Yep.
Okay, I'm just impressed that 92% of our students are either advanced or proficient in, in English, and 80% in math. I know that it would be great to have better numbers, but I'm a mad, I'm just sort of wondering where you have to get to...
Yeah.
To be level-two or level-one.
Why are you agreeing?
Because I'm thinking, you know, 92%, 63 of them percent are proficient, a third of them are advanced, uh, seems like, you know, it's a pretty rigorous standard, because the language, I just don't, the language of level-three, the, is, the level sounds here on page, the second page of the first document, it sounds like it's a relative measure, not an absolute measure of your performance. It's just where you are in the pack.
It's, it's where you are in the pack, but it's also based upon a calculation over four years, it's a weighted calculation.
With the, right away.
And that's the calculation I'm going to take you through. I mean, this is good. I'm glad you're excited and ahead of the, ahead of the pack there. But we'll, we'll be to that in just a minute, and we'll have you kind of go through, and you can see that while the news is good, and we are indeed celebrating that news. In fact, I think both the superintendent and I have very overtly complimented Dr. Perone and his staff on the efforts that they have made, and we're going to talk about that in terms of the whole global picture of East Hampton in general. But again, it's not just what happens this year, just like, just like, if the performance isn't good in a year, okay, it's just a year, okay? And they're not making determinations anymore on your status as a level based upon one year, okay? Because that could be anything. That could be a cohort of students, because we know that every group of students has its own makeup. And so sometimes you have a cohort that just is, you say, "Boy, now that class, I'll never forget, that was a super class, they did this and this and this." And then there are other classes that you say, "Wow, I don't know how it all came together that way," okay? So there's different cohorts, and so not, not putting it on one year, we're going to look at it over a period of time. So we're going to have something called the annual PPI, that's measuring the progress from one year to the next, in the five or seven indicators, okay? And that's what you're seeing when you see, um, down below, you see, and it's in dark print, annual PPI, total number of points divided by the number of indicators, as I told you, seven for the high school. So you see how that was, was calculated for each year. And you can see that 2010 wasn't a year that you would want to bottle, okay? And so consequently, that's one that we would like to see go away, and we're going to talk in just a minute about how that's going to happen. Cumulative PPI, that's the one right underneath. Now, look, look at this one. This one's going to give you the formula, for those of you that like Excel kinds of things. The 2010, 2010 PPI, the annual PPI, you take that number, you multiply it by one, you factor it by a weight of one. 2011 gets factored by two, 2012 multiplied by three, 2013 multiplied by four, okay? And we're dividing by 10, because if you take 1Z, 2Z, 3Z, and 4Z, and add it up, you get 10Z, okay? And that gives you, basically, an average based upon the weighting, and that's what determines your cumulative PPI, which is going to have some bearing on your level, okay? So while we are making progress, we haven't quite made enough progress, okay, to have gotten to a point with all the calculations that they use to be out of level-three. But we anticipate, because what's going to happen next year, you can see, ah, you see, the light is going on, isn't it?
So because 2010 is so much worse...
Right.
...than the other three, if we drop that and replace it with something that's as good or better than 2013...
So maybe like 2015?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Get the right year? 2014 scores come out, guess what happens to 2010?
Those are way...
Okay?
That's it.
So it's gone. If we can do as well or better, preferably, as we have been doing, and we do that same weighted calculation...
What does that number have to be, do we know?
Pardon me?
What is that num, so it's 78 now, do we know what it has to be?
Well, it's not 78, it's 96.
Ninety-six.
Oh, you mean, the 78 is the, the meeting of the target. Um, you know, I don't know what it is. I don't know exactly what it is.
We could probably calculate it, but we haven't done that.
We could probably calculate it and figure that out. And, and I know Vito has done that, up at the high school. I just don't know exactly. Yeah, we could call, call. Vito, pick up right now. But we do know, and we have a, a data specialist that works with us from our district school and assistance center, Kim Morandi, who's been wonderful with us, and she's worked a lot, and she has met with the superintendent and I, very clearly told us that if we continue on the trend we're going, without a doubt, we will be level-two, if not, level-one next year.
I mean, can you imagine? Holy cow.
But some of our schools, I mean, it's only the high school that's level-three, correct?
Correct.
Right. So the, the other, we have other schools that are at level-two.
And one.
And one.
But what will happen is if the high...
Right, but the district gets tagged by whichever is your lowest-scoring school.
That is correct.
If the high school's no longer level-three, then the district would no longer be level-three.
Right, right.
Okay? So let's move on. And the PPI target, by the way, each year that you would like to have is an average of 75, so the fact that we got 78 had us meet the, the goal that they were setting, we exceeded it by three points, okay? Now we're going to drill down, because we're looking at the big picture, now we're going to drill down to the CPI level, okay? And the CPI level, CPI is an index based on points awarded for student MCAS scores, student MCAS scores, related to annual targets, okay? Now you have got a handout two, so we're going to switch to handout two. And on one side, you have English Language Arts, on the other side, you have Mathematics. We'll start with the English Language Arts, and I think Peter was kind of jumping ahead, grabbed that one, took a, took a look at a couple of pieces of good information on there. And you can see a category called CPI. There is a CPI, or Composite Performance Index, for all students. Then it breaks it down by what we call subgroups of low income, disability, race and ethnicity, gender, Title I status, et cetera, so that you can see how groups did as a CPI. And in terms of calculating that CPI, if a student in a group, okay, like all students, they take all the students that took 10th grade MCAS in English Language Arts, and for every student that got proficient or advanced, they give 100 points. For every student who got needs improvement high, so you can see what the scaled score is there, they get 75 points. For every needs improvement student in the low category, 50, warning failure high, 25 points, warning failure low, gets zero points. So every student's performance counts towards this. It's a composite of the performance that, that, based on an index, okay? And so basically, if you look at the information, I'm looking at all students, I can say that for all students in English Language Arts in 2013 at the high school, the CPI was 98.
Hmm.
Not shabby.
That's 98 out of 100.
That's right.
You can't score better than 100.
That's right. Now, that's awarding points...
Ninety-eight out of 100.
That's awarding points based upon what their performance was.
Right.
So it's telling you that the skewing, when you did the average, the skewing was towards proficient or advanced. That's good. If you turn it over on the other side and look at math, you can see that for math, the Composite Performance Index for that was 90.1. Again, very good. Now you go down, and you're going to see some other numbers, because you're going to talk about certain subgroups, okay, and how the subgroups were performing. And it's not unusual for us to see some of the subgroups struggling for a variety of reasons, okay? Our high needs are made up of students who are either English language learners, low income, or special education, and those are, are known to be categories that would, that would have some difficulty with the academic tasks. And so there's some changes there that you would see. You can peruse that. But basically, the idea is that the composite index is derived by going through, once again, a formula based upon student performance. Okay, CPI measures of performance. CPI is calculated for math, ELA, and science at those tested grades. All points are totaled and divided by the number of students to get the CPI score, that's what we just went through. Highlights from EHS are the two that we just noted, for ELA and for math, in the category of all students, putting all the students together, including low income, special needs, et cetera. Drilling down even a little bit further, we're going to talk about something called SGP, Student Growth Percentile. We talked about that a little bit, and you're going to be able to see the student growth percentile on Form Two, that you're looking at, both for math and for ELA, it's another category, it's called the Median SGP, because each student will get a student growth percentile based upon themselves, but then they collect that all together, and they give you a median student growth percentile. And again, you can get it for all students, or you can get it for the subgroups as well. So the median student growth percentile describes a group's progress in terms of how the achievement of the students in the group changed relative to the prior years as compared to their academic peers. So they're, they're taking a student like Shirley, comparing Shirley's progress to, to Shirley's progress last year, or where Shirley was last year, and they're saying, and let's put her in a group of like students, students that performed sort of like Shirley historically. So they, they, again, very complicated, that's why we have computers, to figure this out and to put me in that particular group, okay? So if I look at that, the student growth profile is calculated for math and ELA, because it's tested every year, not science for that reason. And the target for student growth percentile is between 40 and 60. Ideally, they, they want 50, they want in the middle, but they give you that minus 10, plus 10 kind of range. So anything between 40 and 60 is what they consider to be in a good range for the student growth percentile. So once again, take a look at the student growth percentile for mathematics. The median for all students was 44. Uh, you can see that the non-low-income students had, actually had 51. So again, this is, this is a median, so there's a lot of factors being put into it. If you look at English Language Arts on the other side, the median was 47. You can see that low-income actually had 48 as their median student, student growth percentile. That means that, that some of those low-income students actually made some pretty good progress from one year to the next. So again, you can look at this once you understand what the, the growth percentile is actually measuring.
You gotta light a fire with the guys.
You get on that, Peter.
Well, but I mean, but, you know, when you talk about all the subgroups, one of the places where there's the clearest split is female, male. And, you know, the girls are carrying their weight, so come on, guys, let's go.
I think it's fine the way it is.
And notice, I'm not going to speak to that in any fashion. But I would like to summarize and basically say that the PPI is made up of the CPI in math, ELA, and science, as well as the SGP in math and ELA, with extra credit thrown in for moving more to advanced and out of warning and failure. Oh, and if you're a district or a high school, you have to add in, of course, the graduation rate and the dropout rate. Simple, right?
I got it.
It's, it's a lot of fun. So I want to give you some of the highlights, okay, of this year. East Hampton highlights the student, student growth percentile in the elementary, and I'm putting the, down the three schools in the elementary. In math, student growth percentile was 69.5% at one building, 66% in another, and 46.5% in another. So all three, student growth percentile, so that's how much the students are growing from one year to the other. Now, in the elementary, remember, they're only growing from third grade to fourth grade. That's all they can grow, okay? Two of the three schools were above the state in proficient and higher, so they, the state gives you a figure of how many students, or percentage of students, excuse me, in the state that scored in the proficient or advanced range. In two of the three schools in the elementary, we were higher than the state in how many students we had, and again, this is basically in mathematics, okay, we're talking about mathematics. Two of the three schools above the state in proficient or higher. Middle school, one of the highlights there is the annual PPI went up. So what do I mean by annual PPI? That's that number you were looking at, remember, the 96, you said, "Boy, doesn't this look great for the high school?" In the middle school, their annual PPI went up 57%.[1725.15] In the middle school, their annual PPI went up fifty-seven percent. That's very good. Now, it's very good because they didn't have such a great year last year, but fifty-seven percent increase is a big increase, okay? So in addition to that, their eighth graders, in terms of their Student Growth Percentile, eighth grade math was fifty-four point five percent, again, in that forty to sixty range, so very healthy, above midpoint, and ELA at fifty-three percent. Again, very good in English Language Arts, excuse me, in math and English Language Arts for Student Growth Percentile. So the students making individual growth is something that's happening well. And then in the high school, where we really saw some of the best results, their PPI went up twenty-two percent. But remember, it was like at seventy-something, and then it went up to ninety-something. So it was already high, but twenty-two percent was very good and enough to make it meet target. They were above the state in the proficient and higher range in both ELA and science, and they were only one point off of the state in math. So they were right there in terms of the state in all three of the academic areas that were measured. The Student Growth Percentile in English Language Arts was forty-seven percent. So again, right in that forty to sixty range. So those are some of the highlights, some of the good news. So what does this all mean? Well, this is all about data informing practice. That's what all of this is. Some of you heard that we had a data workshop this summer with Kim Morandi, and we formed data teams at each of the schools. We went through a two-and-a-half-day training with Kim. It was phenomenal. You heard about it at one of the previous school committee meetings. And those data teams are now functioning, and we just talked about it at our leadership team meeting today, functioning in each of the building. They're using the data. They're working with that data to decide what practices need to change, which ones do we need to continue to support and enhance. So that's data informing practice. Data driving improvement plans, our improvement plans for the schools, the district improvement plan, the school improvement plans. Teachers writing their goals, administrators writing their goals, are writing them based on data. Data is driving the interventions that we're planning on using and providing based upon this data. There are things we're doing well, there are things we're not doing well. Where we're not doing well, we have to put interventions into place and start to beef that up so that we can see the data change. Formative, which is ongoing, and benchmark, which is targeted at different times during the year, assessments, are being introduced in many of the classes and at the various grade levels. Sometimes it's all of the fourth grade are going to do this particular activity together, this assessment. All of that is going to drive instruction. The data from those things going to inform the teachers about changes that they need to make. Speed it up, slow it down, take this turn here, okay? All of that is driven by the data. State, district-determined measures that the superintendent spoke about, that's part of the new educator evaluation system. That's something that'll be, I'm sure, for a future school committee meeting to discuss that and what that looks like. But those district-determined measures that come into place next year, they're called, it's a component of the education system called Impact on Student Learning. The teachers will be evaluated, one part of their evaluation will be on the impact they have on student learning, based upon these district-determined measures. So needless to say, the data from that is going to be closely looked at to make changes in practice. So the focus areas, what do we have to work on? Well, we've got a lot to work on. Got to move students up in the bands. Got to take the failure students, get them out of the failure category, at least into Needs Improvement. We prefer higher than that. We're going to get bonus points for doing that, number one. Number two, it's the right thing to do for students in their education. Also want to move those students, especially at the middle school, move them from proficient to advanced. We need to close the achievement gap between the subgroups and all students. So when we see that the students in, students with disabilities, or the low-income students are scoring so much below the all-students category, okay, then we know we need to do something to move that up so we get more of a pure average than we do having the high performers and the low performers. We need to do something about that achievement gap. Peter?
I think I understand, and at one level, closing the achievement gap makes sense. But I, and maybe I'm just messing around with numbers in my head. If the highest achieving group improved by, I mean, if the lowest achieving group improves by twelve percent, we'd be like, well, that's great. And the highest group improves by sixteen percent, we'd be like, well, that's great too, except the gap just grew.
That's correct.
Well, that's perverse, right? I mean, both groups have gotten better. I mean, strictly by the numbers, it would be better that the low group improved by twelve and the high group improved by eight. Now, that wouldn't be as good as what we described before, except the achievement gap would be smaller.
That's correct.
So the indicator measures something as a positive that, in the real world, we would say, no, 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 that's not a positive.
Well, that's one of the reasons that you have so many different measures in the MCAS is because some are going to measure the fact that there was that growth that took place.
Right, which is good.
And some are going to measure that gap because it's saying, what are we doing to make sure that we're providing the supports that these students need to be as proficient as possible, to get as close to those who are achieving at a higher rate?
Because the MCAS claims that with all of the, they'll allow students to make changes. They can have more time, they can do this. So they're saying that the idea, whether the practice is true, but the idea is that everybody should be able to achieve the same score in the MCAS in a vacuum.
In the ideal, in the vacuum, yes. A lot of variables involved.
It's just when you do that hand motion, I think everybody understands. There's something that makes people a little nervous when they see that upper hand come down, right? What we're talking about is doing this.
That's correct.
Right? But even if we just keep doing this, where the hands don't get any closer, that's great. Everybody's getting better. And that's, even though it's only one, it's just, it's one more example where worshiping at the shrine of these numbers, we're not all full believers all the time.
That's correct. That's right. And the other thing that you know is, as you get higher, it gets harder and harder to make that progress.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And then positively affect, we want to positively affect criteria that comprise the PPI. So we want to increase the annual PPI numbers and meet our targets. I mean, that goes without saying. We want to do what we need to do in all those five or seven categories to make impact on that. We want to continue the high student performance to impact the Student Growth Percentiles. We want to see those student SGP's percentiles continue to be strong. That was one of the things that I highlighted. We want to continue to do that in all scored areas, not just in the math or whatever I highlighted, but in all areas, okay? Continue to do that. So how do we do that? Well, we do that with targeted interventions. Find out what the data's telling us, put our interventions into place. We do that with data-driven planning, where the teachers are taking the data and using it to plan where they need to go and what adjustments they need to make. We do that also with diversity of instruction. That's meeting the needs of those students who are underperforming. It's also providing activities for those students who are already excelling. It's differentiation. It's having diversity of instruction taking place instead of the daily blue plate special, okay? Now, so what's changed recently in terms of meeting those targeted things that we want to do? Well, you've heard this tune before. I'm not sure I can play it too many different ways, except that, say, say it with maybe the most passion that I can put behind it, and that is, there's just a consistent loss of revenue. That loss of revenue happens on the state level to the towns, and it happens clearly on the towns, in this case, to the school district. So that loss of revenue that happens from year to year and the reduction in grant funds, one of the grants we count on the most to support interventions for students is our Title I grant. That grant alone was cut fifteen percent this year, which represented over $60,000. So we cannot, I just, I don't know how else to say it. We cannot continue to sustain these constant cuts and still be able to have the same performance that we had the year before or the year before that. If you look at it, the performance goes down. Now, you look at the high school. How did we do at the high school? We did pretty good at the high school. We did good at the high school because I took every grant resource I had. I took everything I had and I put it into the high school. How did the high school perform? Better. Where are we having trouble now? Our Level One elementaries have now become Level Two. They dropped down. Why? Because we used to have five Title I teachers. Now we have three. We used to have more paraprofessionals. Now we have less. So we can do it. We can make the impact. We can do the work. But we can't do it everywhere. We don't have the capacity. So now that the high school's doing well, I'm going to take my resources and put them into the elementary. How many of you have played the game whack a mole? Pops its head, you whack the mole, and another one pops up. So we saw a problem in the high school. We addressed it. We see the progress that was made because of it. And now our Level One elementaries, that just a couple of years ago were commendation schools in the Commonwealth, are Level Two and very low performing. I think you wanted to say something.
No, I just want to take exception to the idea of loss of revenue from the local budget. You don't lose revenue. It doesn't grow as fast as you need it to grow. It doesn't go down. I mean, I admit that your federal grants have gone down because of the sequester. That's going to continue to happen until the federal government figures out how to govern. But locally, I think that the capacity to grow is somewhat limited unless we can get some more commercial development.
So are we level funded or level serviced?
Well, we have a gap.
We have a gap.
I think we've agreed, and Mike and I've had this conversation before, that while the funding has increased. The level, to maintain the level of services is greater than that. So we have a gap, right?
Yes, so here we go with a gap again.
Right. And that gap is what is the difficulty, and the gap is...
Because you've got fixed costs that go up every year. And those fixed costs just make that gap get larger, which is exactly, I think, what you're talking about.
But I think your basic point's a really important one because I was just reading someone else today, some editorial had said, well, you're not going to solve the problem in schools by just throwing money at them. But what your evidence shows is that targeting the use of resources in areas where there are needs produces positive results by the most politically popular measure. Everybody's excited about data. I might have reservations, but certainly the wind is blowing in this direction. And so I guess there's, and that's a popular thing to just sort of say and throw out there. Everybody goes, uh-huh. Except that the data flies in the face of that, which says, when we do provide the targeted resources in the areas of need, we see greater improvement than we would without that.
Dramatic, immediate improvement.
So...
Well, and I think that's a good point, Peter, because I think, you know, we do know how to target our resources and to use them effectively and efficiently to address whatever areas of support are needed in our district. But it's simply the case that the gap is there and things that we used to have, we no longer have. And so we do have to figure out this limited amount of resources. Where are we going to put them? And we have to put them where we see the greatest need. And when we do that, you can see what's happened. You know, we've seen some really wonderful growth at the high school. So the last two years, three years maybe, two, since you came here, that's what we've been doing, is targeting the issues that we've seen at the high school with our limited resources. And, you know, in that time, we've lost literacy coordinators at the elementary school. We've lost reading teachers at the elementary schools. We've lost tutors, math and English Language Arts tutors at the elementary schools. And now we see what happens. And we aren't able to give all of our schools the targeted resources that will make a difference for our students. And so that's the catch-22 that we find ourselves in.
It's all cyclical because that then affects our reputation as a city, our attraction to people moving in or moving out, or the choices they make, whether they put their kids in these schools or not, and whether or not businesses choose to open here or to remain here. It's, I believe it lives or dies by the district.
You know, I will say that we still are very similar in our results with Northampton, clearly.
Oh, yeah, toe-to-toe.
Right. So, you know, it's not that we're facing this alone, but, you know, we're asked to make change, and we know how to do it, but we have to have adequate resources to do it.
And the interesting thing is we're staying toe-to-toe, as you say, with Northampton, who just passed an override, okay? And has some funds now. I mean, I think, I think what you're saying is correct, but I think, and I'm not directing this at the mayor because the mayor was a strong supporter of the override, as well as most everybody in this room probably. But we have to decide as a community, okay, what we need to do about this. And I know it's blood out of a turnip or whatever the sayings are, but basically, the point is, we know what to do. We know it's successful. We can't keep it going in all the places it needs to happen. I mean, in all honesty to you, I'm sure I made a presentation a couple of years ago, and I can assure you, I probably stayed away from mentioning the high school at that time. And I'm sure, in fact, I will guarantee you, that I emphasized our Level One, right, schools that were commendation schools. I'm sure I talked about our commendation grant, et cetera. You know, I haven't worn my stupid T-shirt in a little while, so obviously I did that. Tonight, I'm talking to you about the high school for two reasons. One, it's my Sunday best that I can put on for you. Number two is, it's a success story of what we can do when we put our initiatives, our interventions, in a targeted way, when we look at the data and we say, where do we need to put it? So we're going to do that now. We're going to shift some of that. And it's not that some of that doesn't need to shift to the middle school because it does. But right now, the elementary has some concerns that we need to address right away. So that's going to shift my focus in grants with the limited reduction in the grants I've already had, and I'm going to put that as much as I can into the elementary so that hopefully next year, we see something a little bit better, that we stave off going from two to three or something next year. We're already gone from one to two. And we'll do that. But then what concerns me is, what happens then to the things that we've done at the high school? Can we sustain those?
So hopefully, losing 2010 is enough for that year.
And we'll try to maintain what we have at the high school. But it's like juggling a lot of balls and try not to let anyone drop.
Right. And I think that Mike, the mayor's point is well-made, that we've tried, in the short run, the override route, and it didn't work. And I think that we can all rehash the analysis of that. But the only other way is to grow the pie in the community. And then we gain resources for all services. I guess, you know, going back to Mike's original concerns, mayor's original concern, I think if we just said the consistent loss of services. I think everybody agrees that that's what we've experienced because of a bunch of things. And so, you know, we're the school committee, and I don't know what power we have over commercial development in the community. But clearly, that's the other, the most likely other path for us and future school committees to have the resources so that what you're saying to us some year down the road, and I hope it soon, is we did what we did at the high school last year at every level and in every school, and look at the results that it produced.
Correct. I'd love to stand here and be able to say that to you, okay? And it's going to take the resources to make that happen. And that's the part that's scary. And I think that's the message. I can't imagine that the message that I'm delivering to you tonight is that different if I were standing in a different school committee meeting in a different town. I mean, I think many, many towns are facing the same kind of situation. And again, it's a shell game. I'll move it over here, we're going to get better, you know? Move it here, what happens? It's sad, and it's something that I think is part of the story that needs to be told to the community about what we're facing. And as I said, we, what we do works. We just don't have the capacity to do it everywhere we know we need to do it.
And Shirley, in the school committee, I think another, another component of this out in the state is that there are these turnaround schools. But for the most part, these turnaround schools have been given a huge influx of dollars from the state because of the situation they found themselves in. And with that money comes the resources that enable them to turn around. So it's a wonderful story, but, you know, it does go to show that we do need resources in order to be able to do the things that we know we need to do to support all of our students. Anything else, Shirley?
That's it for me.
Any other questions for Shirley? Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is the mayor's report on the municipal school support at White 13.
Well, actually, it's part of the transition is that these reports are likely not going to come from the mayor's office in the future. You're going to continue to get them. So the estimated reports that you've seen for the last two budgets came from the finance director, and the actuals are coming from the auditor now. And so the auditor has the capacity to see exactly what hit the books, and so it makes sense for that office to provide this report. So that's a part of transitioning, my transitioning out. That said, I certainly am more than happy to talk about this. You've seen the format before. It is essentially the city's Page Two of the school budget. Only this is, when we close the year, we update, it's updated to show actual. The new piece in here that, if you were to compare it to prior years, is in the non-net spending section in the bottom. There's a new $1 million, which is what the taxpayers are providing to pay for the new high school. And so that will show up now while that high school debt exists. It doesn't affect the minimum net spending requirements of the state because it's not net spending, it's non-net spending. But it is education spending out of the tax base, and so that's why it's there. That does not factor into the way that I, and I can't speak for the next mayor, but that does not factor in the way that I have traditionally shared the available resources, that the debt service for school buildings is not included in that calculation of sixty-seven percent of the available general revenue because we don't consider the override as available for any purpose. It's only available for the debt, and so it doesn't get included in the calculation.
I'm sorry. Does that, does that addition of the calculation to include the taxpayers... Does that, does that addition of the calculation to include the taxpayers' cost for the new high school explain the percentage growth?
Yes. If you look, if you look at, so it, that total education number in this year will look skewed.
Okay.
Because, and that's why I wanted to bring it up, is that's added. The real growth was under 2%. I think, actually, I pulled a copy of the budget. So, the, the estimate, the estimate when we wrote the budget was 2.7%. The, the real growth in education spending without that debt in it. Now, that number may have changed slightly. I think that, if I look real quickly, it looks like the charts, the choice and charter payments that we estimated in '13 were 1.8. They actually came in at 1.7. And so, that changes a little bit. School revenue went down a little bit as well, and so, the number gets mixed a bit. So, it's, it's, it's less than 100,000 difference, but that, so that 6.7, 6.76% is not, that's not a number you should compare to previous years. It may be useful to compare it in future years, because in future years, the debt will be there as well, although in '14, the debt will likely be higher before it starts to go backwards. We'll, we'll pick up another piece of permanent debt soon to finish paying for the high school. So, all we've borrowed for the high school in a permanent way now is 14 million. We have the authority to borrow up to 18 million, we're probably going to borrow a total of 17 million. And so, that number will go up slightly in '14, and then it should start to level off and slowly go down. Long-term debt on, on this bond is equal annual payments against principal, so that number won't change for the 20 years of the bond. What will change, of course, are the carrying costs, the interest costs. They'll go down each year as the principal is reduced.
So, it's like resetting it?
20 years. I'm sorry, Peter.
So, in effect, the budget number that we're looking at to compare year by year is being reset by the introduction of the capital and interest costs on the high school.
It might go up a little more in a couple of years, you're saying?
Yeah. Next year, it'll likely go up. But that's, I know, I wanted to point out that it's on here, it's not carried in the budget calculation.
I just want to be sure that everybody in the audience-
Because it's in a separate section, it's really in a separate section of the budget. It appears in, in the debt and interest section of the budget, not in the school department. The auditor included it, and the auditor has every right to include whatever she wants to include in her reporting. But I wanted to point out that these numbers didn't exist in prior reports. And so, you need to understand that the number, this 6.76% is skewed from the perspective of, you know, that's not 6.7 over last year, last year's number didn't have that debt in it. And so, you need to pull that out, and, and as I said, it's a little over 2%. Nothing else really has changed. If there are questions, I'd be happy to go through this in some more detail. I will go through it in section, just so you, you have a sense of the sections again, just to reiterate. So, the first section on that page called General Government, that's essentially the, the administrative operational support in the business offices and maintaining the business computer systems that the school department uses. So, the, the auditor is, is integral in managing the funds that, that are spent by the city. The treasurer obviously cuts all the checks, runs the, you know, runs the payroll list that's, that started in the school department, and the computer services, the, the computer network, the business network is shared. What I will suggest is that the audit reflects what the school's percentage of the budget used to be. So, we charged the, by agreement made years ago, when, when net education spending was, must be 20 years ago now, when net education spending first came of vogue, and now we're doing it all the time, the school's budget was about 45% of the general fund expenditure. And so, now, it's about 67%. We have not changed these, these agreements have not been changed in, in the 20 years that we've had them in place. So, the woman who was responsible for this was a, a school business manager named Candace Walzak, and she was quite the business manager. She's in South Adley still now, and she's a wonderful business manager. So, just so you know, that, that number, I think if it was recalculated, would probably be based on the two-thirds that the, that the department gets now. Public safety, that is, that is recognizing the service of the school resource officer. And so, that is not in your budget, but it is something that's expended on behalf of the system and the students. Public works, these are all agreements or formulas based on what kind of fuel is used by the department. So, the motor fuel that's used by Pete Roy and his people in their trucks, in their tractors, in their mowers, all comes from a general public fuel supply. There's a single budget for gasoline, you don't budget money for gas or diesel fuel. And so, that's just reflecting essentially the, the most recent, when this budget is written, the most recent closed year on the current value of fuel. So, we look two years back, what did you use for fuel, multiply it times this year's cost, and that's the assessment. Cultural and recreation, you, there is a, there is a users' agreement with the park department, since the park department's fields serve as the school's fields, that user agreement's been in place for, I think, as long as net spending existed, relatively small numbers. The employee benefits numbers are actual, the actual costs to, to support in, in, in the benefit way, all of the employees in the school department. So, the contributory retirement is not for the teachers, because the professional staff have their own retirement system, the city doesn't contribute to that. This is for the non-professional staff that either are working in the school district or have retired from the school district. That number's set by a state agency called PERAC, the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission. Workers' comp is the actual premiums that we pay in workers' compensation insurance based on payroll. Medicare tax is actual tax. Chapter 32B is the actual city share, so the 75% of the health insurance that's paid to all active school employees. This includes teachers, since teachers participate in the local health insurance plan. Liability insurance based on, so liability is based on a couple of things. There's a school board liability that is directly for our actions, and so, it protects the city if the school board takes an illegal action. It's an insurance policy, a liability policy. But there is also, there is also insurance that's included in liability, that's property insurance. And so, that's includes the calculation based on property insurance as well. So, the school buildings are all insured, the vehicles that the school drives are all insured by the city, and so, that's where that number comes from. Unemployment, in private business, you pay a tax on payroll, and that tax on payroll is based on your history of unemployment, you know, your claims history. In the public sector, we simply pay the claims. And so, an employee is, is laid off, it could be a long-term sub that, that is no longer employed, they go, they collect their unemployment check, the state bills us for the value of that check, and we pay the bill. And so, that's the actual cost of checks issued to school employees.
100%. You pay 100%?
Yes. And then, insurance administration, there is a ratio, a percentage of your health insurance. And so, we have a staffer that works in the personnel department that manages the health insurance program, she's a clerical-level staffer. And we look at the, the percentage of, of insurance costs for school employees and the percentage of insurance costs for non-school employees, and take that individual's gross salary and divide it by that percentage. School charter choice, we estimate those in the beginning of the year based on what's called the cherry sheet. It's, it's essentially the document that's put about, put out by the Department of Revenue when the budgets are approved. And so, there's a cherry sheet issued when the House approves its budget, there's a second cherry sheet issued when the Senate approves their budget, when they jointly find, come to a final budget, there's a third cherry sheet, and when the governor signs a budget, and sometimes that's modified, there's, there's the last cherry sheet, and that cherry sheet generally delayed, dated sometime in July, and that's the document that we end up using. What will happen in the estimate is that we'll use the cherry sheet numbers. What happens here is that the auditor will then look at what was actually collected, because cherry sheet numbers are an estimate, and they're based on, you know, they're, they're developed in March and April based on historic understanding of data. Generally, by the time I think your October, your October reports come in, there's a solid number. And that number can shift. In some years, it shifted up, some years it shifts down. It's good when it shifts down, because that really means that in future years, there'll be, whatever that additional money will be available to go directly into the appropriation as opposed to supporting the choice payments to the state. So, we end up with a, with a total of the net municipal spending. So, that's the spending that under, under law can be considered supporting student education. So, the net spending part is what's considered direct support of education. The non-net is the next section of this report, and it's not considered spending in support of student education, but clearly, it, it, it has a relationship to student education, it just doesn't count in the state's formula. Again, insurance administration's a part of that, but this is for the retirees. And so, depending upon when a community decided to provide insurance to their retirees, it's either net or non-net. Because in 1988, I think, when they, when they began writing this law, we weren't providing health insurance for our retirees. Anytime we decided to after that, it doesn't count. So, we do pay 50% of, of retired employees' health insurance in East Hampton. And that 50% is, if we were doing it prior to '88 or '89, it would count as net. For, for your purposes, not having it count as net means that the city has to make up a little extra effort in order to meet the state's requirements for minimum net spending. There's another formula used for park facilities, it's detailed in the reports that you got when we wrote the budget. And to be quite honest, I don't exactly recall what this $3,900 relates to, but I think it relates to other uses of the park, the pavilions, that sort of thing, that isn't covered in the original net spending agreement. And then, finally, I mentioned the, those two items, the, the debt and interest payments on the school, which are newly reported, and, and really don't have any impact on what's considered minimum net spending. And then, finally, the retiree insurance, the actual cost of the retiree insurance. And you've got a subtotal for, for non-net spending, municipal spending, that adds to this budget, because the, the school department spends money that is not considered net spending, mostly transportation, I think. I think that's the biggest part of it. You know, so the state doesn't think that getting children to school is an important thing, and they don't let us count it as net spending. I don't know, most parents think getting kids to school is pretty important. Which brings us to a total on that education spending added to the net, gives it that 21,002. Now, just to give you a, a sense of it, we had projected 20,003. There's about $1 million of debt and interest shown in these actual numbers, and so, 23 versus 22, there's about $100,000 difference between what was projected in, when we wrote the '13 budget and what, how the '13 year closed. A part of that, a small part of it, about, about 30,000, was money that wasn't expended that was in the budget, and the rest of it were lower numbers in this calculation. A part, part of it is the lower charter choice number coupled with lesser income. The income difference in, in the school system, by the way, just so you're aware of it, is really the Medicare reimbursement, what, what's conventionally called Mass Health. The, the effort to control healthcare costs has led to a reduction in payments to service providers. And you might hear about these, this when you talk to people who run medical institutions, hospitals, that sort of thing, saying that, you know, the federal government is reducing their support for the services. Well, we're a service provider in a small way, and we're affected by that as well. So, we, when I say we, I mean, the school department, they're a service provider, and so, their reimbursements are reduced, same as everyone else's is being reduced. What else can I tell you? The only other number I think, well, not the only number, the, another number that may be of interest is the fourth line from the bottom. And that is the calculation between the minimum the city should or is required to spend on net education and what it did. So, in this case, this report shows about $550,000 to the good. Now, you can't go negative, well, you can, some communities have, but, but it's, it's against the regulations, and at some point, the state comes back in and they want to find out what's going on. Something like that is happening anywhere, has been happening anywhere for a couple of years. There was a disagreement, or, or a misunderstanding, or a deliberate effort, I won't try to categorize it, but there wasn't enough money going to education to meet the state-mandated minimum spending requirement. And so, that's really the, that's really the number that, that, the, the barometer number. The unfortunate part about, about what's happening to funding in East Hampton is that the state has decided in the last round of formula changes that we're more affluent than we used to be, and so, they're driving their percentage of the foundation budget down. And I think you've heard me say this before, when, when I started, there was one formula set up, and the target, the state's target for support of East Hampton schools was 55% of what they, what they call the foundation budget. And that's not quite net spending, but, but it's a calculation of what, what you absolutely have, you can't run a school for less than this. The changes in the formula have resulted in the state trying to fund only 45% of that. And so, when you see in budgets, "Oh, there was an increase in Chapter 70," it doesn't come here. Because in order, in order for them to meet this target, they withhold any new money we would have gotten until our ratio changes from 55 state, 45 city, to the opposite. And so, we're now approaching that, and the good part of that is that, is that then increases we will get. But in the meantime, the, the local property taxes had to make up the difference, and because local property taxes grows so slowly, it's not been able to. You know, we have, we collect about 18 million in property taxes, so that grows at 2.5%, that's roughly $400,000. So, that's all the new money we have to spend. And it gets chewed up in all kinds of places. Retirements generally go up. We've been very lucky with health insurance. The plan that we have has not gone up in the last three years, I believe. When the health insurance plans start to rise again, then that'll have a drastic impact on available funds for everyone. But it'll clearly show here, because even, let's assume that the next mayor wants to maintain 700,000 or 800,000 above minimum net spending, or targets $1 million above minimum, minimum net spending. If, if your cost of employee insurance goes up by $200,000 for the school's employees, that's 200,000, it isn't coming to the department, because it's being spent to pay the premiums. And so, that's one of the reasons that I've been such a difficult negotiator when it comes to those sorts of things, is because anytime we spend more money on employee benefits, it comes out of the budgets that we have available to deliver services, and so, makes it somewhat difficult. The bottom two numbers are calculations that I developed over the years, I don't know if they'll stay or not. They're kind of two, two student numbers. The state gives us a foundation enrollment, but it never actually matches the students that we support. So, the number that I use matches the students we support, and that's all the students, including choice and charter, because we are supporting them in the budget. You know, with, with choice students, we're supporting them with not only our Chapter 78, but also with additional tax money, with, with charter, I mean. With choice, we're losing Chapter 70, but with charter, we're losing Chapter 70-plus. And that's, that's the kind of the difficult part about charter schools. That's the way the state decided to fund it. Maybe someday, I'll have a, a better say in that, but for now, for now, we're just subject to it. Happy to answer any questions, if, if there are any.
Except, there was one number on here, I didn't quite know what it meant. Underneath the high school debt and interest in Chapter 32, there's a, a number, 2,286,000?
My, my, I don't know. I don't know, I didn't write the spreadsheet, that doesn't look like it belongs there.
Yeah, I didn't notice that on last-
It shouldn't fit into the calculation, and it doesn't seem to add up.
Right. It's the 1.723 number to the right, that's the correct number.
I'll, I'll ask the auditor about that, because I don't know what that is.
Good catch, LaDonna.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't seem to add up to, well, I won't go there.
No, it adds up to 70.
And it's not contained, I, I, just looking at a copy of the budget document, and it's not contained there.
Yeah. But it wasn't on last year, there was no number there last year.
Yeah, and, and it's got to just be something stray. Maybe she was using a box for calculation and forgot to clear it, but I'll ask.
So, Mike, the total per pupil spending is the total indirect net-
Well, it says net. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Where are you?
The total per pupil.
Oh, yeah, okay. The first, the first bold one. So that is, that is the total, in this case, it would be the twenty-one, well, again, it's not my spreadsheet, but on my spreadsheet, it would have been the twenty-one million, the total number from here divided by the students.
Okay.
In this case, the nineteen-hundred-and-thirty-two students. The numbers that are more important and the numbers that are comparative to other districts are the two bottom numbers, the net spending. No one, at least not that I've ever seen, no one usually compares total spending. Most, most discussion about education spending ignores non-net spending. And that's, it's, it's a little skewed for local districts because we don't get any support for transportation. We used to. Regionals do. And so when you look at, when you look at a regional, the spending and non-net side is supported more by the state than, than it is in a, in a local school district. So the bottom two numbers, if we use DOE's foundation enrollment, it looks like we spent about ten thousand, three hundred dollars per student. We use the number that, that I think is, is more accurate, and that is the counting all the students that actually are, are identified here. These are students that go to Smith. These are students that are in charter and in choice, and the students that are actually enrolled in our buildings or that we've, that we've sent to another placement. That's closer than what we're spending per head, about ninety-six hundred. And we do compare, as you said, favorably with some of the other districts that, in the area. Is it enough? I suspect not. And, go ahead.
In a way, that's kind of skewed because we're not really looking at what we're spending on our kids in our district and comparing that. Where the, the numbers are skewed because we're paying much a higher rate for choice and charter.
Well, you're, you're paying, you're paying a higher rate for charter. You're not paying a higher rate for choice. And as a matter of fact, choice isn't taking any tax money out. So I don't know, I don't know how far the number is skewed. You could calculate it. The superintendent provides a report this time of year, I think it was at the last meeting, of, of the actual number of students here. So you could do that. You could take the sixteen-hundred-and-seventy or whatever, which are just the students. You'd have to include Smith because Smith is paid for out of your budget. So you really have to include Smith vocation when clearly we, we would, we would include the other local school because they're really still our children. So what you would do, I guess, is remove the charter and choice and do the calculation again.
Yeah. And redo the calculation. Pull that, pull the dollar amount out.
But you'd also be pulling the one, you'd also be pulling, in order to do that correctly, you'd be pulling the number out of the net spending number as well. Because net spending includes what we pay for charter and choice. So you'd have to take both numbers out to see what we're actually spending here.
To take the one point seven million out of the net.
And, and the two hundred and whatever number, two-hundred-and-sixty children or whatever it is that are out on charter and choice. Pull both of those numbers out, and you could do another calculation. And it's really, I mean, you could, you could dice this up any way you want as far as calculations go. I give, I'll give you something that's not here. It's, it, I think, if I'm, if I'm not, and I'm pretty sure I'm not mistaken, that this, this spread above minimum net spending is smaller this year than it was last. I think in our calculations for closing twelve out, we were about seven hundred thousand dollars, if I remember that correctly, above minimum net spending. And we're down to about five fifty here. So there's been, there's, there's been a shrinkage of that excess. Now, between the budget start date and, and when the state finally set the minimum net spending numbers, that number actually came up a little bit. And, and, and so I, you know, you'd have to figure out what the difference were from year to year. This will be a good report to compare to the auditor, to the auditor's next report. It's a difficult report to compare to what I've given you in the past because it contains different numbers. And, and it's, it's just harder to compare when you've got two different numbers. But I think it, it'll be a good document moving forward, compare thirteen to the auditor's statement when fourteen closes. And the, the finance director's statements, now you've had her work for two years on the, on the appropriations. And so that should be an easy comparison moving forward when the, when the fifteen budget comes out.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Andy Paquette. And summary of the year-end close of FY thirteen and preliminary update on FY fourteen, school department budget.
I, I apologize. Can I ask one quick question? Just, can we get a copy of the PowerPoint that Shirley?
Yes.
Presented to us?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry, Andy.
No problem.
Good idea, Peter.
Included in your packet was the year-end result for FY thirteen, the local budget, the non-net school spending accounts, and all the grant, the revolving accounts, I'll say. Grant's still not closed out yet, but you'll see the activity. What we've added is there's another column on the far right that is what we're going to be reporting to the state in the end of the year, people financial report. So if you look and see, we fully expended the budgets, both for net and non-net, and we still have funds available. We're pretty much on target. It might be a little different in different pockets. During the year, I've been talking about the money being in choice as far as a projected surplus. That was a projected surplus with expending all circuit breaker. But as part of the closing out, instead of doing journal entry upon journal entry, we left eighty thousand dollars in circuit breaker plus just under four hundred grand in school choice. So you'll have, you know, that gets us to, come for FY fourteen. We're still on target as far as funds available going into FY fourteen regarding those, the original plan. Yes.
I'm, I'm looking at school actual spending of fourteen-eight-seventy-four on the auditor's report.
Yes.
I believe that would be two numbers in yours, net and non-net.
What it is, that, that fourteen-eight-seventy-four that she has provided includes expenses that were holdovers from FY twelve that occurred in FY thirteen. You know, how we hold over expenses and then it also, but it doesn't include the holdovers from this year into, that were paid over the summer.
And so that's why there's a difference in a way.
That's exactly correct.
And that's the confusing part of this is that the city's required to report based on fiscal year. Your reports are based on academic year.
It's fiscal year, but the thing is, we, the expenses that we incur during the year but pay over the summer are credited to the fiscal year. So we have to report them on, to be technical, it's called the modified accrual basis of accounting. So we've incurred the expenses. We just paid them after June thirtieth, but we credit them as having been paid before June thirtieth. So you do, you have a, sort of the shift of, the overlapping of the beginning of the year expenses from the city and the city's books versus the end of the year. So that's why when we saw that too, our first reaction was, you know, wait, how is, could this be? We've reconciled with the city and fully expended our fifteen million and change, but she's coming up. So when we looked further at that, it was the way that they have to keep track of their expenses on the city side versus what we have to report.
And the difference isn't significant, but, but it's, but it's, fourteen-seven, fourteen eight, probably seventy thousand dollars, I guess.
That's okay. So, I mean, I can answer any questions you might have on the thirteen. You can, I will say, when I was reviewing this with the superintendent, the highlighted areas, those are just sort of my internal notes as far as journal entries and where things are going to be charged and what was considered the holdovers and reclassifications. So you can ignore those. Those are just internal working documents that helps us track as far as when time comes for us to reconcile where things were charged and where we ultimately wanted them to be charged.
Any questions? No questions?
Regarding FY fourteen, then, I will sort of piggyback off of what Ms. Gilfeather reported. And we're going to get back to the, you'll get more, the monthly reports. We're going to also include more narrative so that you're not just looking at numbers and what do the numbers mean. We still want to do a work session or something regarding what do these accounts mean and the overall funding, if you will, of, of the school. But one of the struggles we're, I say struggles we're having is that, as Ms. Gilfeather said, the Title One grant was reduced by sixty-some-odd thousand dollars for FY fourteen. We have now gone through all our final hiring and where things lie regarding that, and the grant has yet to be approved. But I can tell you, as of right now, when we have put everything in regarding where people, the ins and outs, and with a factor potentially of this grant, we're looking at thirty-one thousand dollars shortfall, all things being equal, going to June thirtieth. No cause for alarm right now. We're going to be monitoring that. You know, that's anticipating worst-case scenario of expending, you know, all our sub-account money, all the heating, electricity supplies fully expended, tuitions and everything stay the same according to budget. So that's where we are right now as far as FY fourteen. And the good news, I will say, that the discussion at the state is that circuit breaker reimbursement will be up to seventy-five percent. And when we build the budget, we budget it at seventy percent. So we should see, knock on wood, that we don't have any, the year nine C cuts again.
Eventic events.
Yes. That is where we're looking. I do want to just sort of jump back. One of the, another positive thing regarding FY thirteen is regarding the food service. In the school lunch operations, if you look, there was about a twenty-two thousand dollar charge that we charged to school choice for the food service program. That's the deficit for operations and food service this year. Where when we started, if you remember, we were, when we were self-operating, it was in the eighty thousands and change, you know, not even including the benefits picked up by the city, to eighty another year, down to fifty, to forty, and now we're down to twenty. And of that twenty-two, some odd thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars of it was unanticipated cost due to, we had a, the freezer go down at White Brook, so we had some spoilage. We had, there were larger milk sizes requested at the high school that we sent to the food service program. He has to get larger milk sizes. And we asked Chartwells because of some personnel issues for a time there to pick up the cleaning of the cafeteria at one of the schools that's not only done by the maintenance. So they picked that all up. So you're looking at a twenty-two thousand dollar shortfall in operations with nine thousand of it being unanticipated. So I'd say as far as financially, again, I know it's not the most important thing when we're having a discussion regarding food service, but financially, we, I'd say we definitely have turned a corner in a much positive direction.
Well, and I would say that the quality of the meals that we're serving our students has improved over the years greatly.
It's just more evidence to what Shirley was kind of touching on earlier that clearly, you know, one argument from the public when we're requesting more mon, funds or we're talking about the possibility of an override, you can't argue anymore that this isn't a completely tightly run ship. Like the budget is expertly managed.
And tight.
I just have one question. Back to the two thousand thirteen.
Sure.
The sped tuition, non-public sped tuition.
Mm-hmm.
It looks as though that we were half a million plus.
That goes to, again, it's an accounting thing. If you were to look at what was paid out of the, the special education two-forty grant, and it's, if, the combination of the two-forty grant, tuition revolving account, circuit breaker, and the preschool tuition account, we had those funds available there. So when we built the fund, this goes back to, I remember the dreaded all-funds discussion of the budget, and it was a matter of where do we want to charge it? And it was sort of, again, a six of one, half a dozen the other when it comes to reporting. We charged all the tuition to the local, and the two-forty grant picked up the contracted services of medical, medical therapeutics, psych services. So, you know, as alarming as that looks, when you go and look at the all-funds, we were within budget regarding our tuition accounts. That gets to what you're asking about sort of the, the shift we're going to be making to adding more narrative to these reports because things like that would make me alarmed, if I was to say it.
So when you provide us with reports along the way too, will you consolidate, like you started to do the end of last year, by cap?
Yes. This was just, again, in, in a sort of, this is the document that we're going to be using for reporting to the state that's reconciled with the, the city auditor and at the auditors when they come in and do the end-of-the-year report. So this sort of is, you're, you're getting a sneak behind the curtain if you're real as to how we, we run things. But yeah, it'll be the normal routine of chunking things up to the major function codes by the Department of Ed. So, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Are you done, Nancy?
I am done.
Okay. Thank you. I believe now we have our minutes from the September tenth meeting session.
Move to approve the minutes of the superintendent evaluation goal session on September tenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the September tenth reg, what did you say?
Work.
Work session. Work session.
Goal.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. So noted.
Move to approve these minutes of the regular session, school committee meeting on September tenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So accepted. Payroll?
Payroll.
Whoa.
Move to approve the school payroll dated September nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of four hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second. Okay.
It has been moved to approve the payroll dated September nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated September nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated September nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Move to approve the school payroll dated September fifth, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of two thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. This was a payroll adjustment.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the school payroll dated September the fifth, two thousand and thirteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Those are just signatures, okay.
Any, anything else that needs to be brought to our attention?
We do have a, under.
We have a district field trip.
To Washington DC, I believe.
Motion to approve the trip to Washington DC.
All those in favor of approval? Aye?
Aye.
All those who want to go?
Yes.
No, oh, oh, excuse me. I believe that the field trip to Washington DC is approved. Are there any other?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye? All those abstaining?
This one's outside.
Thank you.